All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the order, the March 7th, 2022 session of the City of Elgin Planning and Zoning Commission. Look to staff now to please call the roll.
Commissioner Abouali?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Lopez?
Here.
Commissioner Migala?
Here.
Commissioner Valdez?
Here.
Commissioner Wilder Muth?
Here.
And Chairman Cox?
Present.
We do have a call.
Thank you. Trust everyone to had a chance to review the meeting minutes from the February 7th, 2022 session of this commission. If there's any corrections or discussion, now would be the time for that. And if not, Chair will entertain a motion for the approval of those minutes.
I move to approve.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Abouali?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Migala?
Epstein.
Commissioner Valdez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilder Muth?
Yes.
And Chairman Cox?
Yes.
The minutes are approved, six, zero, with one abstention.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is the chairman's opening statement. So, I'm a little hoarse tonight, but hopefully everybody can hear me. Take the opportunity now to welcome everyone here tonight in the council chambers, my fellow commissioners, city staff, AV crew in the back, and our court reporter down here. It's exciting that we're all back in person, that we can do this, again, face-to-face. And, as I understand it, it's the second meeting that we've had now where we're not only recorded, but we're also live. So, that's exciting as well. Just thinking back a couple of months, we had three or four people in the council chambers, so to see it a lot more full is a great thing. We've got four petitions on the agenda tonight. I get a conditional use for 1570 North Randall Road, another one for One Douglas Avenue. Plan development is a map amendment for 1425 Gifford Road, and then a program for graphics, which is at 1425 Madeline Lane. So, as always, we'll hear about each of these petitions coming up. But before we get into that, I do want to take the opportunity to just talk about the procedures and the importance of tonight's meeting. The commission's role is to review these development proposals and provide our recommendations to city council. For our petitions tonight, we will look to city staff to open, give their comments. We will take the opportunity to ask staff questions as a commission. Following that, we will invite the petitioner teams to come on up to the lectern, give us your thoughts, add anything that you'd like in addition to what city staff has presented. The commission then will take the opportunity to ask each of you questions. For those of you here in the audience, maybe your first time tonight, remember, we're all people, don't be nervous, just tell us your thoughts. If there's anything that you want us to know, please, this is the opportunity. When we're asking those questions, just do your best and tell us what you can. Following that, we will open each of these petitions up to public comment. So, if you are here for public comment on any of these, this is your opportunity. Tonight, we both open and close the public hearing portion of these petitions, so tonight is your opportunity to be heard. Once we close the public comment portion, we deliberate as a commission, and assuming the petitions are approved, they will go forward to city council, where there'll be at least two meetings, where they'll receive the final determination. You can work with staff on what those dates will be. But remember, in all cases, the P&amp;Z commission is the public hearing portion for these petitions. So, again, this is your opportunity, please tell us your thoughts. At this point in time, we'll move forward with the agenda, so those of you who'll be speaking tonight, please stand and face the court reporter for the oath. Anyone, if you think you may be presenting or think you'd like to comment tonight, it doesn't hurt to stand, just in case.
Will you all raise your right hands? Do you solemnly swear the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. And I think we got your mic, so that's great. First item on the agenda, 1570 North Randall Road. Looking to city staff, it seems like the petitioner team is not here yet, so we will move that item down on the agenda. So, that moves One Douglas Avenue up next, that's petition 02-22. We'll let staff get set up here and load the PowerPoint, as well as check any sign-in sheets. So, this petition is to establish a commercial event space on the third floor of an existing four-story commercial building.
All right, good evening, everybody. Nice to see everybody back in the room. So, the first application tonight is the application by Dory Hait and Douglas Elgin Venture LLC, who are requesting a conditional use to establish a commercial event space for activities pertaining to the assembly of people with any departures, as may be necessary or desirable, at the property commonly referred to as One Douglas Avenue, Unit 300.
And do we have proof of proper notice?
We do have proof of proper notice, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So, here is the aerial map of the subject property in question. The property is located downtown Elgin. It is at the northeast corner of Douglas Avenue and East Chicago Street, outlined here in red. It's approximately 8,000 square feet in area. It is improved with a three- and four-story building that covers most of the property. The property is adjacent to an alley on the north side as well. The pedestrian access to the property, the main access, is off of Douglas Avenue. However, the first-floor retail tenant spaces also have pedestrian access from East Chicago Street. The property is Zone CC1, Center City District, as you can see are the other prop-- all the other properties surrounding the subject property. To the north is a three-story mixed-use building, to the south is the two-story Union National Bank. To the east is a two-story commercial building, and then finally to the west is the 15-story tower building that was recently remodeled into residential units. Here is what the subject property looks like. The first floor is currently home to an office use, an investment advisor, investment advisors, a consulting firm. The second floor is home to the office of the Illinois State Appellate Defender, and then on the first floor, there's also a Pastigal Bakery that faces East Chicago Street. So, the applicant is proposing to establish a commercial event space on the third floor of the subject building. It's a 9,000-square-foot space, it's known as the Unit 300 within the building. It also includes the mezzanine fourth floor that sort of overlooks the third-floor space. The event venue would be known as the Ashbury. It would be the second space that is owned and operated by the Hait family, who also owns the venue called The Hait at 166 Symphony Way. This would be the sister venue for that, the Hait facility, it would be a smaller space that would accommodate up to 150 people. The space would be rented out to various, for various types of private events, such as weddings and other social gatherings. The events that would take place here would be allowed to have accessory music, however, the venue would not be permitted to be used as a music or concert venue. Food would be permitted to be served as part of the events, however, no food would be prepared on-site, similar to most of the other event spaces that we have downtown. Similarly, the events may also include the service of alcohol, however, the applicant will have to obtain a liquor license prior to service of any alcohol. Just like, as is the case with other uses and businesses downtown, parking is not required. There's adequate public parking available, there's a public parking lot at the southwest corner of East Chicago Street and Douglas, essentially a kitty corner from this, and then there are additional 250 spaces available at the Spring Street parking deck, which is about one block to the east. The request is, needs to meet the standards for conditional use. We have provided our overview of the standards in the staff report. We do believe that all applicable standards are satisfied, and therefore, staff recommends approval, subject to the conditions outlined in the packet. And the applicant teams here can address the commission.
All right, thank you for that. Since everyone's here, makes the question or order a little bit easier tonight, we don't have to do alphabetical order, or reverse alphabetical order, or anything tricky. But I will start on my right, Commissioner Wilder Muth.
No questions.
Commissioner Martinez? Lopez, I'm sorry, Commissioner, I know, I know, and I apologize, deeply apologize, please forgive me.
No questions, sir.
Commissioner Valdez?
No questions.
Commissioner Migala?
Nothing for me.
Commissioner Jones?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Abouali?
No questions.
All right, at this point in time, we'll invite the petitioner team to come on up and tell us your thoughts. And when you do come up, please state your name, spell it, and give us your address.
Dory Hait, H-A-I-G-H-T, first name D-O-R-E-E, and address is 166 Symphony Way.
Kari Goodmay, G-O-O-D-M-A-Y, first name K-A-R-I.
All right, well, thank you for having us tonight. Damir summed it up pretty well. If you haven't been to The Hait, I invite you to come over. Absolutely walk you through the space and give you, walk and talk through what we do every weekend, every day. As he mentioned, this is going to be our sister property, and it's literally about two blocks away from The Hait. We plan on hosting any and all private events, such as weddings, birthday parties, showers, and whatnot. I think that pretty much sums it up, if you have any questions.
Well, we appreciate you coming on up to the lectern and telling us what you could, so that's good. We will definitely take the opportunity to ask you questions, so we'll start with Commissioner Abouali.
Were you getting a lot, are you overbooked at The Hait? Is that the idea of opening it, or just the business strategy?
We're getting an influx of inquiries, and so, this kind of presented itself as an opportunity to give those clients with a head count that's small, a place to go.
Very cool. No, no other questions.
All right, Commissioner Jones?
I think you guys have a third, a third location in another community, correct?
That'll be opening up, hopefully--
In May.
Yeah, hopefully in May, in Pingery Grove.
Can you, how does the occupancy process compare to, you've done this now a couple times here in town, to another community? Similar. The Pingery Grove property is going to be much smaller, it's going to have a cap of 75 people, so adding the Ashbury to our list, or our group, will now allow us to have small, medium, and large events. Just a comment, you guys have done such an amazing job over at The Hait, it's such a beautiful facility and such nice work, it's a real asset to downtown Elgin, thank you.
Commissioner Migala, questions for petitioner?
Just a comment, you know, I myself have been there for a few chamber events and other things, and, you know, impressed with the property, and it looks like, you know, business is taking off for you, so congratulations, and, you know, best of luck.
Thank you.
Commissioner Valdez?
No questions, but congrats.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lopez?
No questions.
Commissioner Wilder Muth?
No questions.
All right, I don't have any questions for you, so thanks for coming on up.
Thank you.
All right, as promised, that was the opportunity, for those of you here tonight, we're opening the public hearing portion of this petition, so if you've got questions or comments, come on up. All right, done the three count in my head, so no one's moving, so we will close the public hearing portion of this petition, and look to city staff for any final comments.
We don't have anything else to add.
Short and sweet, all right. So then, at this point in time, the chair will entertain a motion for this petition, 20, I'm sorry, 02-22.
Commissioner--
Go ahead. Please first.
I move to recommend that city council approve petition number 2-22, subject to conditions outlined within our packet, and to adopt as the findings of the commission, those findings also provided within our packet.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Abouali?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Migala?
Yes.
Commissioner Valdez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilder Muth?
Yes.
And Chairman Cox?
Yes.
Motion is approved, seven to zero.
All right, as mentioned, that's our recommendation to city council, I'm sure you will be talking with staff. Thanks for coming tonight, good luck in the future. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda, this is the one at 1425 Gifford Road.
Chairman Cox, if I may, I believe the applicant for the first petition has arrived, so perhaps we can hear that one?
Oh, excellent, thank you. All right, so we will move back up then, to the other conditional use at 1570 North Randall Road, petition 63-21.
All right, and for this one, we do have proof of proper notice as well.
Thank you, sir.
This is the application by IB Singh Incorporated, doing business as 7-Eleven, number 33135C is applicant, and Paul LLC as the property owner, who are requesting a conditional use to permit accessory package liquor sales at the existing 7-Eleven Motor Vehicle Service Station and Convenience Food Store at the property commonly known as 1570 North Randall Road. So, the subject property, again, is outlined in red, it is located at the northwest corner of Randall Road and Fox Lane. It's approximately 1.3 acres in size. It is Zone PORI, Planned Office Research Industrial, that was established back in 2007. It's part of the property where the former barn is located, which is on this aerial shown immediately to the south. Back in '07, that barn was approved for a restaurant and an event space, however, that never came to fruition. The zoning remained, and up until recently, that barn stood in place, however, recently the city approved the construction of a medical office building for Ortho Illinois that's currently under construction, so that aerial is not 100% accurate. To the north is a four-story office building, that's Zone PORI, Planned Office Research Industrial, and then to the east is the large manufacturing plant for John V. San Filippo, which is the fisher nut manufacturing place. So, the property is improved with a 7-Eleven gas station and a convenience store. The building is approximately 3,000 square feet in size. It was constructed in 2004, the site includes 11 parking stalls, and there is, there are six double-sided fuel islands in front of the building with a canopy above it. So, the applicant is requesting conditional use approval to be able to sell packaged liquor as part of the convenience store. This is the first step of the approval process, they need to obtain the zoning approval, conditional use, and if that is approved, then the applicant needs to apply for the liquor license prior to any service of alcohol. They are proposing to sell packaged beer, wine, and hard spirits. This would be accessory to the existing convenience store, so less than 10% of the existing floor area of the convenience store can be devoted to the display of alcohol products. This floor plan indicates, sort of in red, what those items would be, in a few coolers, and then in the few, on the few retail racks that would take up about 72 square feet, so much less than the 10%. They are not proposing changes to the building or the site, and they're not proposing any changes to the signage. If any future signage would be installed, they would have to obtain a sign permit prior to that. They are not proposing any changes to their hours of operation, their convenience store is open 24 hours, however, the sales of liquor would be regulated by the liquor license. The application needs to satisfy the standards for conditional use, those have been provided in the packet. We do believe that all standards are satisfied, and staff is recommending approval, subject to the conditions outlined in the packet. And of those, I'll point out a couple. One is, they're pretty standard for these accessory package liquor sales, the first one is that there would be no consumption on-site, and they're not proposing any. And then the second one is that no sales of beer or malt beverages are allowed in individual containers, and any other alcoholic product less than 750 milliliters. So, with that, staff recommends approval, subject to those conditions, and at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant's team is also here, can address the commission.
All right, well, we'll hear from the petitioner in a bit, but now, asking questions of the commission, start with Commissioner Valdez.
No questions.
Commissioner Migala?
I went for the city, so you mentioned 10%, is that a function of voluntary kind of compliance, item that's a function of the floor plan, or is that a city requirement per code?
It is the city requirement for the, it's essentially, the use is called accessory package liquor sales, and it's defined as accessory, so the code spells out that it's got to be less than 10% of the floor area to be considered as accessory. If they were to exceed that, then the use is no longer classified as accessory package liquor sales, it becomes simply packaged liquor sales, which is essentially a liquor store that's allowed, there's no limitation how much alcohol product they can have and all that.
And the city's satisfied with the plan, and it's at the 10%?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, nothing further?
Commissioner Lopez?
No questions.
Commissioner Jones?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Wilder Muth?
No questions.
And Commissioner Abouali?
No questions, thank you.
All right, I have no questions for you. All right, this time, we'll invite the petitioner team to come on up to the lectern, and kind of the usual protocol is when you come on up, state your name, spell it for us, and give us your address, and I believe, one item here, we probably need to swear you in, you weren't here for that part, were you?
Yeah.
All right, all right, we'll ask that of both of you then, please.
Hi, Neeet Sahani.
Will you raise your hand?
Hi, Neeet Sahani, I'm the owner of the 7-Eleven location.
Yeah, we'll just do the oath.
Take an oath. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give, the truth, the complete message?
Yes.
All right, yeah, again, if you could state your name, spell it, and give us your address, would be good.
My last name is Neeet, last name is Sahani, H-A-R-N-E-E-T, and S-A-H-N-I, so located in 1570 North Randall, Elgin, Illinois, 60123.
All right, thank you.
And my name is David Stotts, S-T-O-T-T-S, and I'm a representative of 7-Eleven. So, the reason why we're asking for this is just to bring a bigger variety to our customers in the area. You know, people on their way homes, grabbing stuff, you know, we've, you know, since COVID, we've grown more groceries and more things, so we're just trying to make it more convenient for the people in the area.
Okay.
That's all I got.
All right, that's fine, want to give you the opportunity, I think is the biggest and most important thing, so then with that, we'll ask questions from the commission. So, we'll start with Commissioner Migala.
Nothing for me, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Valdez?
No questions.
Commissioner Jones?
No questions, I hope that it gives you a little boost to add the sales to your business.
Commissioner Lopez?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Abouali?
No questions, thank you.
And Commissioner Wilder Muth?
No questions.
All right, I don't have any questions for you, so thanks for coming tonight.
All right, thank you so much.
All right, as last time, we'll take the opportunity now to open this petition up to the public hearing portion, so if any of you who are here who have comments, now is your opportunity. And again, going once, going twice, all right. We will close the public hearing portion of this petition then, and look to city staff for final comments.
Nothing further to add, again, the application is for conditional use for accessory package liquor sales, staff believes that all standards are applicable and recommends approval, subject to conditions.
All right, appreciate that. So then, at this point in time, the chair will entertain a motion for this petition, and that's 63-21.
I move to recommend the city council approved petition number 6321, subject to the conditions outlined within our packet, and to adopt to the findings of the commission, the findings also provided within our packet.
Thank you, is there a second?
I second it.
Thank you. Staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Wilder Muth?
Yes.
Commissioner Valdez?
Yes.
Commissioner Abouali?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Migala?
Yes.
And Chairman Cox?
Yes.
Motion is approved, seven to zero.
All right, gentlemen, thank you for coming this evening. Again, work with city staff on the upcoming dates for city council. All right, we will try to approach the 1425 Gifford Road petition again, but we are back on the regular schedule. To my fellow commissioners, you may have noticed, my architecture firm has provided documents in the next petition, so I will need to recuse myself. At this point in time, I'd like the commission to appoint a chairman pro tem, is there a nomination?
Yes, I nominate Commissioner Stephen Migala as pro tem chairperson.
And is there a second?
I second it.
Thank you.
All right, so we have motion to appoint Commissioner Migala as a chairman pro tem. Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Valdez?
Yes.
Commissioner Abouali?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Migala?
Epstein.
Commissioner Wilder Muth?
Yes.
And Chairman Cox?
Epstein.
Thank you, so the motion is approved, five to zero with two abstentions.
All right, thank you, Chairman Cox. Damir, do we have the petitioner present, and do we have proper notice?
Yes.
Please proceed.
Okay. So, for the record, this is the application by William Scotsman Incorporated, as both the applicant and property owner, requesting approval of plan development as a map amendment with departures from the Elgin Municipal Code, requirements for exterior building materials for industrial buildings, the location of a commercial operations yard, the vehicle use area interior landscape yard, the location of a six-foot-high fence, solid fence, and any other departures as may be necessary or desirable, to construct a 26, 800-square-foot addition to an existing building, and various site improvements, all at the property commonly known as 1425 Gifford Road. So, as usual, we'll start with the aerial map. This is, again, the property outlined in red, aerial map, overlay of its zoning. The property is at the southeast corner of Gifford Road and Spalding Road, it is approximately 24 acres in size. As you can see, properties to the north and to the east are all shaded the same color, they're Zone GI, General Industrial. To the north is a property that's currently vacant and partially used for mulching operations. To the east is a property that's also vacant, immediately to the east. And then, to the south, is the CF Zone property, that is home to Elgin Energy Center Substation. And then to the west are properties-- And then to the west are properties that are located in the village of Bartlett. Those are single-family homes that are part of Huron's Landing subdivision. Here is the bird's eye view of the subject property, looking north. The property is improved with a few buildings, and I'll try to point them out. There are two one-story office buildings immediately at the, at the corner of Gifford and Spalding, two office buildings for administration. They're approximately 6,000 square feet in area. This right here is the, is the maintenance facility, that's approximately 9,000 square feet. There are two surface parking lots for employees and visitors right at the front. And then, essentially, the remainder of the site is fenced-in commercial operations yard for storage of these portable modular office trailers and storage containers. There are two access points to the property from Gifford Road, essentially for the office employees and visitors. And then there's one access roadway to, or driveway to Spalding Road, that essentially provides access to the, to the commercial operations yard in the rear. Property is home to William Scotsman, also known as Will Scott, which is a rental agency that is specializing in leasing of these portable modular office trailers and storage containers, all for commercial operations. And this is what the two office buildings look like from Gifford Road. So the applicant is requesting approval of plan development of a few departures, essentially to construct an addition to the existing maintenance facility. The area map here indicates where the addition would take place, sort of in the back of the existing maintenance facility. The proposed addition would be 2,600, 26,800 square feet in area, and it would include, it would include 21 oversized, oversized doors that would be used to bring in these trailers inside the building for, essentially for maintenance and for repairs. Maximum height of the addition would be 29.3 feet to the top of the ridge. The addition would have, as you can see, the same architecture and generally the exterior materials as the existing building. That includes this metal siding, that is, the code limits the amount of metal siding. They are including a base of, up to a height of eight feet as a base of the building. So the majority of the building being metal is one of the departures requested by the applicant. So the proposal includes various other site improvements. I'll mention a few. The first one is that they would eliminate the existing driveway that's approximately here, they would, they would move essentially to the east, and then they would add a second access driveway. Both of these would be for the commercial operations yard in the back. As part of this, they would, they would redo the existing stormwater detention facilities along Spalding Road. They would dedicate 30 feet of, the northernmost 30 feet of the property to the city for the Spalding Road right-of-way. And then, as part of that, they would, they have to modify these detention facilities to make sure, to make sure that they're outside of the right-of-way, and that they are on the private property. The new fenced-in commercial operations yard would include a surface parking lot along the north end that would provide additional 35 parking stalls. That would bring the total number of parking spaces on site to 65, and that meets the zoning requirement for the 53 parking spaces that is based on the number of employees. They would also relocate one larger trailer that's used for administration and various other functions and storage, that would be located here east of the addition. And then finally, the, the biggest part of the site improvements would include extensive landscaping on the perimeter of the existing fence. The applicant has agreed to install additional trees. There would be a total of 147 trees on the site of that, 135 would be evergreen trees, all of those with the intent to screen the existing commercial operations yard, these trailers that extend above the six-foot fence that's already there. So once the trees grow, and they're going to be evergreen trees, that would provide screening year-round. The image on the left is, as you can see, the landscaping along Gifford Road, the, sort of the southern portion of the property adjacent to that commercial operations yard. And then the images on the right are the portions of the fence and landscaping along that fence along Spalding Road. So the proposal requires several departures from the code. The first one that I mentioned earlier about the exterior building materials, the code limits these new buildings and new additions to no more than 25% of a building elevation that can be devoted for non-traditional building materials. So they have more than 25% on every building elevation of these metal panels. The commercial operations yard, they're not expanding it, they're not changing the layout of the commercial operations yard. The existing, the existing commercial operations yard and the fence essentially extends beyond the existing office buildings along Gifford Road, so that sort of portion of, of the yard extends into the street yard where it's not allowed. So this departure would, would make that lawful and conforming. They are also, in that same fact that there's a six-foot fence that closes that commercial operations yard along Gifford Road that extends into the street yard beyond the buildings, code allows only a four-foot-high open design fence in the street yard. And of course, there's a six-foot solid fence there, so this would make that fence lawful and conforming as well. And then, as part of the building addition and site improvements, there is limited vehicle use area interior landscape yard. The code requires 5% of the total vehicle use area as interior landscaping. They have only about 1.3%, so that's one of the other departures. The applicant has agreed to install all required trees, plus some, and all those trees are located on the exterior of the existing fence, as I mentioned, to enhance the screening of the commercial operations yard. The application is required to meet the standards for map amendments and for plan developments. We've provided our overview of the, of the standards in the staff report, and we believe that all applicable standards are met, and so staff recommends approval of the application, subject to the conditions outlined in your packet. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Representatives from Will Scott are also here, can address the commission.
Thank you, Demir. I'll start on my left, Commissioner Abouali, any questions?
No questions for staff.
Okay, Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, Demir, I noticed that the applicant has agreed to dedicate 30 feet right-of-way on Spalding, and also including 2,000 linear square feet of sidewalk space, or installation. And then, further down in the packet, defining that it's in the city's 2018 comprehensive plan, industrial land uses include more intense, more intense industrial uses capable of generating excessive noise, traffic, odor, and other nuisances. That seems like an area that maybe we wouldn't want to be incorporating more pedestrian and recreational type of traffic. Can you help me understand that, that addition?
Quite to the contrary. The, the city policy is to extend sidewalks along all city streets. And these types of facilities tend to have employees that may, may have to use other means of transportation, such as public transit, or bikes. They, you know, every facility like this, we've made sure that they provide bike racks to provide, you know, parking for bikes. And yeah, so sidewalks are, are required along all city streets when we have substantial improvements to the properties. City, city staff make sure that, you know, applicants and developers provide public sidewalks to fill in the voids where we have. This is, you know, southeast industrial park, it's certainly our, our heavy industrial park, where there's heavy traffic along the roadways, but that, you know, that's, there's no reason not to have public sidewalks. There's a single-family residential subdivision across the street. So we frequently see, especially in the, in the winter months when there's snow on the ground, we can see the footsteps of people that walk up and down these streets, industrial parks, and it just justifies the need for these sidewalks all around, so.
Thank you for that information.
You're welcome.
Anything further? Okay. Commissioner Valdez?
No questions.
Commissioner Lopez?
No questions.
Commissioner Wildemuth?
Could you maybe just clarify, maybe on the, on the map, how much of the expansion is happening on the side adjacent to the residential subdivision, or kind of where that's occurring, or if it's kind of on the other side of that property?
Sure. So this probably shows it the best, so this is the aerial map of the subject property. I have a cursor here on my screen, but it doesn't appear to be showing on, let's try this again.
Bring back the laser pointer.
Yeah, I was trying to, there it is. Okay, so, so, so this is the maintenance facility right now, and these are the two office buildings in the front. The dash line indicates the addition. So this will be the addition to this maintenance facility. So this right here on the bottom is the front elevation as seen from the west. Essentially, there's, there is, there's two office buildings and a fence, so, so there's not a lot of this building that's currently visible. But of course, the ones in the, in the back will be a little bit taller, so, so some of that building will be visible to the residents on the, on the west across Gifford Road, which is why we pushed for, and the applicant has agreed, to install substantial landscaping along the fence to kind of screen that from the view. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything further? No? Okay. All right, is the petitioner present? Okay, I'm going to come up. Please introduce yourselves, state your name, spell it, and then provide your address, please.
William Smith, W-I-L-L-I-A-M, S-M-I-T-H, and I live at 1 Garden Hill Lane, St. Charles.
Steven Drews, S-T-E-V-E-N-D-R-E-W-S, 27W 004 Grand Avenue in Wheaton.
Great, thank you. Do you have any further comments or materials you'd like us to consider?
Sure. Just wanted to say, first of all, thank you for your consideration of our application, and we're pretty excited about these improvements. The intent is to improve the efficiency of our operation, and the new, new building addition will allow us better conditions for repairing the modular units, especially in the wintertime or when weather is inclement. I believe there was one response form indicating that we may be devaluing, devaluing the adjacent property values. I don't know if that's true or not, but we are proposing a significant amount of landscape improvements, and we want to be good neighbors.
Is that all? Okay. All right, questions for the petitioner? I'll start on my left again, Commissioner Abouali.
So my initial question was whether you thought and why it might devalue the property, but you had said you don't really know if it will or not. I mean, I understand the landscaping, but is there any additional thoughts to it? Any validity?
In terms of improvements, while we're doing the sidewalk, we're, we're going to redo the retention basins, set them back.
How about noise?
Right-of-ways. I don't, personally, I don't see any significant change. If anything, it'll be quieter, because most of the operations now will be inside.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Valdez?
No questions.
Commissioner Lopez?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Wildemuth?
No questions.
All right, I have no questions for you, so may, have a seat.
Thank you for your time.
Demir, has anybody checked in? Wanting to speak on this petition? No? Okay. We'll open up for public comment. If anybody in the audience would want to step up and provide their comments on this petition, please come on up. All right, seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion of this petition, and we'll look to the city to provide a summary.
Nothing further to add. Again, the application is for a plan development to allow for the expansion of the building on the site and site improvements, with several departures from the code. We've provided our review of the standards for approval in the staff report. Staff believes that standards have been satisfied, and therefore, we recommend approval, subject to the conditions in the packet.
Thank you, Demir. The chair will entertain a motion regarding petition 36-21.
I move to recommend that the city council approve petition 3621, subject to the conditions outlined within our packet, and to adopt as the findings of the commission, those findings also provided within our packet.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Demir, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Abouali?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Valdez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wildemuth?
Yes.
And Chairman Pro Tem McGala?
Yes.
The motion is approved, 6 to 0.
Thank you. I pass the gamble back to Chairman Cox.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda, which is the program for graphics, is the last petition to be heard tonight. That is for 1425 Madeline Lane. Sounds like we're not a moment too soon, my voice is continuing to give out. That's proposal 03-22. We'll let staff reset here. Times like this, we have the utmost patience for the work that goes on behind the scenes, but I know, sometimes I think we need two Demirs to keep things going for us.
Thank you, Chairman Cox. And again, for, we do have proof of proper notice on this one as well. So this last petition before you tonight is the application by Gold Coast Logistics Group as applicant, and 1425 Madeline Lane LLC as the property owner, who are requesting a conditional use to establish a program for graphics to allow three larger flags and one larger wall graphic than what is permitted by the zoning ordinance, and any other departures as may be necessary or desirable at the property commonly referred to as 1425 Madeline Lane. So the subject property outlined in red here is approximately five acres in area. It is at the southeast corner of Big Timber Road and Madeline Lane. As you can see, the, the properties to the west and south, and I guess to the north as well, are also in the same shade color. Those that are west and south are zones PGI, Plan General Industrial, and are part of the same subdivision from 2006, known as the Randall Point Business Park. The one to the south is improved with the one-story light industrial building, the one to the west across Madeline Lane is currently vacant. The property to the north is a stormwater detention facility, zone P-O-R-I, that is part of CWM subdivision. And then to the east is a property that is unincorporated in King County. It has improved several buildings, and that is home to Kellenberger Plumbing Contractor Shop. So here is the bird's eye view of the subject property. It, as you can see, the, there's a building that is under construction, it's actually a little bit further along than shown in this bird's eye view. The property is going to be improved with a 27,500-square-foot office and warehouse building. That would be home for Gold Coast Logistics and their North American headquarters. Gold Coast Logistics is a trucking service transportation company. This is what the site layout will ultimately look like. The building is outlined in dark gray. It is located closer to Big Timber on the top, with, the majority of the building is the warehousing space, on the far west end is the office portion of the building, and then, further to the west along Madeline Lane is the parking lot for passenger vehicles. And then, as you can see, the remainder of site is largely paved surface area for parking of trucks. The warehouse has overhead bay doors that, that face south for the trucks. The access to the property is off of Madeline Lane. So the applicant is requesting approval of a conditional use for a program for graphics. What is a program for graphics? That's probably the first time we've had it. It is a, a program whereby the applicant can request signage that is larger than what the code allows. So what they are seeking approval of is essentially what's outlined here in red. They're proposing four, four types of graphics. They're proposing three flags, two of those would be 40 feet high and 150 square feet in area, where the code allows. Two of those would be 40 feet high and 150 square feet in area, where the code allows 40-foot-high flag poles with 60 square feet flag top of them. And then they're gonna have one flag that's 48 feet high and a 216-square-foot in surface area. They're also proposing a wall graphic on the north side of the building. That would be 206.24 square feet in area, where the code allows only an 80-square-foot sign on the north side. They're also gonna have two other street graphics that would meet the code. One is a wall graphic, essentially the same one as on the north side, but that one is facing south, where a larger wall graphic is allowed, and I'll explain that later. And then they are also proposing a monument sign along Big Timber Road that would be smaller than what the code allows. It would be seven feet high and 46 square feet in area. The code allows a 10-foot-high and an 80-square-foot sign. Here is the overall site plan that shows all proposed street graphics. As you can see, the graphic A is the wall sign facing north. Graphic B is the one wall graphic facing south. The C is the monument sign that's on the north side of the site. And the three flags currently proposed are here. They may have to move to be outside of the easement, essentially right here on the north side of the building, but that's still to be determined. So this is the north elevation of the building, what the building will look like. This is the eastern portion of the building, that's the warehouse. And then the western portion of the building is the office space. They're proposing a wall graphic here facing north. The entire, I'm gonna say, width of the building is about 424 feet long. This wall graphic is only about 20 feet high. Excuse me, 20 feet long. The three flags that are proposed, as you can see, the middle one would be 216 square feet in surface area. That would be reserved for the U.S. flag. One of the two flags on the sides would be for the Illinois State flag. That would be 150 square feet in area. And then the other, smaller flag, 150 square feet, would be for the company logo. Here are sort of a better image of the proposed sign on the north side of the building. As I mentioned, it is 20 feet long, whereas the building is over 400 feet long. For code, because the building is located less than 100 feet from Big Timber Road, only an 80-square-foot sign is allowed. That's essentially because they agreed to locate their building along Big Timber so that it faces inward south, so that the overhead bay doors of the warehouse are facing south and not Big Timber Road. In general, we have a practice, and it's a good design practice, that overhead bay doors do not face public roadways. So they have agreed to do that. However, because of that, they can only do an 80-square-foot sign on the north, which just kind of necessitates this application. The sign would be internally illuminated, as you can see. The colors would sort of match the colors of the building. And then on the right side, you can see the image at night. And just here's an image of what the monument sign will look like. This is a sign that meets the code. They are using the same design elements, the same colors, same lettering style, the logo, and then the colors of the graphic would match the colors of the building. As you can see, the masonry base would be lighter color to match the lighter color on the building. If they choose to install any other street graphics in addition to these four that we just discussed, any other street graphics, such as directional graphics, would have to meet the sign ordinance requirements. An application for a program for graphics, it's got its own standards. We've provided our overview of those standards in the packet. We have found that all applicable standards are satisfied, and therefore, staff recommends approval subject to the conditions outlined in the packet. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. The applicant's team is here as well, and can address the commission too.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Wildemuth, we're up for staff questions.
Demir, do you know if there's any rhyme or reason as to why or context for the initial height and width specifications for the flags that are currently outlined in the code?
Oh, that's a good question. I think, so the flags that the code allows are based on the speed limit along the road, I believe. And so, at the time when the code was drafted, I think we've done, staff has done some research in terms of appropriate size for the flags, depending on the size, speed of the traffic along the road. And I think at the time, it was determined that a property can have up to three flags that was deemed appropriate, you know, 40 feet high and up to 60 square feet of each flag. I don't have the exact reasoning why not larger or smaller flags, but I know that there was some research done to determine that size, and I think it's fairly comparable to other surrounding communities.
Okay, okay. I was just trying to get a sense, because I think we're looking at what, like, almost double the width, square feet. So that just seems like an amount, so I didn't know what the correlation was between why that size and if it was...
Yeah, typically, properties are smaller. You know, we see some of these flags, like in front of restaurants. I believe there's a couple of restaurants on McLean that have sort of, you know, McDonald's flag and a U.S. flag. Sometimes you see them by the car dealers, and they just tend to be smaller. The idea was not to distract from traffic. That was the reasoning for it.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions slash comments, Demir. Do you know, so if I understood correctly, the building is under construction right now or about to be finished?
Correct, yeah, it's finalized.
Okay. Is there a reason why this, I guess, zoning variance request was not taken care of beforehand?
You know, they did not go through the approval process. So the building did not have to go through the approval process that we sometimes see. If the site layout and proposed design of the building meets the zoning requirements, then they don't have to go through the zoning approval process, so they went straight to permit. So you're correct. If they had any departures from the code that we saw with the other petition before, then they would have had to gone through the zoning approval process, and we would have incorporated the signage as part of that application. Because they didn't have to go through that, they have to do a separate application just for this.
Okay. And then, I'm looking at page, I think it's 158 on our packet, the site plan, PG.1. And I'm zooming in to where the three flag poles are at, and it looks like there's three little dots next to the flag pole, which I'm assuming they're uplights. That's a question? And if so, I guess I'm a little concerned at the height of the poles and three uplights each, and how that is going to affect night sky and pollution, mainly light pollution. And, you know, I was wondering if you can maybe speak to that, if that is in fact three uplights each pole?
There will be, yes, I believe those are. That's a question for the applicant. I'll let them answer that. They did confirm that they will have uplights next to each, so I'm not sure exactly if these three dots are that, but they will have uplights. And I will let the applicant address, I believe there are some requirements for uplighting of these flags when they're this size, from the, I think, federal requirement.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Valdez?
No, no questions.
Commissioner Miguelo?
A comment. Demir, I disagree with your findings here on the site standard. The location of the flag poles, you know, the three poles right there at the street corner, the requested variance for the U.S. flag is over three times what's allowed by the code. I just think it's a visual distraction to drivers up and down Big Timber. I'm one of those drivers. I certainly don't want to see such a big flag. I don't see, the petitioner could try to convince me if I'm wrong, but I just don't see a compelling need here to grant such a large variance for the size of the flag. I'm okay with the other signage requests, but the flags just are not started for me. Thank you.
Brown, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
No questions, thank you.
And Commissioner Abouali?
No questions.
All right, I do not have any questions for you. Thank you. All right, it's time for the petitioner team to come on up. So you've taken notes, so if you can incorporate any of your responses to the commission in the first round, that would be good. So again, state your name, spell it, give us your address.
Good evening, guys. My name is Alexander Vaysmann, A-L-E-K-S-A-N-D-R. Vaysmann, V-A-Y-S-M-A-N. Address 1056 Court Avenue, Highland Park, Illinois, one hour away. Anything else? And first, I would like to also echo Chairman Cox's sentiment as to having this be in person. And it's very nice to see faces, and it's just a pleasure being here. I am just a poor architect who is trying to do a good job on behalf of my client. So I can answer every one of the comments, and I really appreciate you guys giving myself and my client the opportunity. So Gold Coast is a national, actually international company, logistics company. And they are, they were located in, starts with a G, but they have decided to make Elgin their North American headquarters home. They have over 1,200 employees. They have a tremendous number of trucks. And as you know, you know, logistics is a hot topic these days. And in addition, they have a big brokerage department, where they're trying to grow their brokerage department, logistics brokerage. In fact, a lot of their clients are people already in that area, from Fisher Knotts to St. Charles, to Amano, to folks that are looking to do business with Winergy down that street, down Madeline. How do I know all this? It's because I worked for Pancora Development, and we've developed that entire park, and I've built every one of those buildings in the entire park. And I've done some light poles and flags before, and so I can tell you what those three dots are. So that is just a minimum required lighting that relates to code as far as the flags are concerned. Why three? Because those flags move, and they have to be illuminated at all times. But it's only code-required amount of illumination focused on that spot where the flag is. They are tiny little uplights, and there's a whole element to what happens to those flags, when they get moved, when they get put down the half-staff, and what happens to those lights, how they adjust, what hours of the day they're supposed to. I mean, there's a whole code section related to those lights. So that's what that is. That's what those three things are. They couldn't, we tried to, we did a map analysis to try to do with two uplights, but then we found some dead zones in, you know, when the flags move. As far as, well, that's my one note that I have. Any other questions?
Just wanted to make sure you had the opportunity to say anything else that was good for now. If not, we will definitely take the opportunity to ask you questions as a commission.
I am, you know, it's, my client has expressed hardship in the sense that it's very hard to, in the logistics industry, all the best brokers are in Chicago. They're young people. The brokers are usually between the ages of 23 and probably 31, 32. It's very hard to get brokers to come to Elgin. These young folks, these young millennials, or whatever their next generation is, they like to stay in Chicago, hence Coyotes and whatever other logistic companies. They're downtown. They're along the expressway. And they have, everyone is trying to make, you know, to do something special to attract employees. Gold Coast certainly is also. I'd love to give you all a tour of the facility. It's a state-of-the-art facility. It's really, it's one of, it's the most expensive building that I have ever designed in that park. And it's a challenge, and that's A. B, part of their other challenge is to attract drivers, because everyone is looking for drivers, and drivers are a hot commodity right now. So signage is important. So when folks are driving down Big Timber, they can see what the building is and, you know, kind of what that's all about. The other thing that I wanted to point out, if you go back, you know...
Just give us a minute, yeah.
The very first, where you showed that zoning, that color map, if you would. Yeah, okay, so where it's, this, may I show this?
Yeah, you can now point to it, and then just come back to the lectern so we can have the mic so we can hear you. Thank you.
My client is, that whole property now also belongs to my client. They have purchased that as well. So it's not an agricup. I saw the description here with the notion that they hope to grow. They hope to really put their foot down in Elgin and really make Elgin their, you know, their home. If any, I think Demir was at the grand opening, and they were really, I mean, it took them a long time to find Elgin and decide on Elgin. And they really want to plant their seeds here. They really want to make this into their, you know, their North American headquarters. They have offices all over the United States, also in Eastern Europe. We have, they have offices in Ukraine, which right now, they're trying to evacuate. They have offices in Moldova that they're trying to evacuate, because that's next, is what they're seeing. They have offices in Egypt. They have offices in Colombia, South America. So they're trying to move their operations, you know, around globally. But, you know, as to the size of the flag, you know, Commissioner mentioned, you know, how big the flags are. A lot of folks that work for Gold Coast are Eastern European or immigrant in nature from other countries. And one of the values that they try to instill is the value of freedom, is the value that, you know, how patriotic they are. The owner lives in Boca Raton. You can kind of guess. And everyone supports that. And it's the, you know, he, Drago Sprenciana, the owner, you know, he embodies the American dream, and he kind of wants to pass that down to his employees. He's very generous with them. That's the reason for the big flag. That's the reason to really, you know, it is not meant as a distraction, by no means not like you drive on 94 towards Wisconsin by my house, in Highland Park, and you drive by the Camping World. That's huge flag. My kids are like, they start singing the, you know, the National Anthem. They don't, it's not a distraction per se, and it's even closer in proportions. That flag is huge. So, you know, I, in conclusion, I'd like to thank you guys for entertaining this submission. And thank you, Demir, very much for working with me through this.
All right, thank you for those thoughts. I'm sure everyone on this commission appreciates the investment, wishes anyone who wants to be part of Elgin much success. And it's all, it's great information that you've provided us. Gets into gray areas that we don't always hear in staff reports, so that's a lot of good information. But at the same... time, we are here to, to look at the, the graphics. So we'll probably bring the, the topic back to that as we focus with questions from the commission. So I will start on my left. Commissioner McGala, do you have questions for the petitioner?
Nothing for the petitioner, but if I can, I'd like to go back to the city with a question. So, you know, this is going to be a pretty intensive use, right? Right in that corner there with Madeline and Big Timber. Is there plans for intersection improvements with respect to like left turn lanes, street light, or a stoplight? I mean, you have trucks going to be going in and out all the time.
No, the city does not have any further improvements to improve the intersection. The applicant has agreed to move the driveway entrance into this property as far away from the intersection as possible. That's as much as we can do. The traffic on Big Timber does not warrant expansion at this point. The traffic on both Madeline Lane and Big Timber do not warrant a traffic light at that intersection. That may be in the future, but not at this time. So in the immediate future, the city does not have any plans for any improvements.
Thank you. Nothing further for the petitioner?
Commissioner Jones.
Thanks for all that background information. I appreciate it. I have no questions.
Commissioner Abouali?
I wish you great success. I have no questions.
Commissioner Valdez?
No questions.
Commissioner Lopez?
Thanks for the information. I've, I've got a couple of questions for you. You got a, you have a couple architects on the, up here on the table, too. So I understand your pain. I've been there, too. I don't have an issue so much with the size of the flag. I think it makes a nice statement. I think my issue, if it wasn't apparent, is the night sky, and how much light you're throwing up there. Was there, do you have, or was there, is there a photometric plan that was done? And did that, you mentioned that that met minimum requirements. Is that, were these lights shown on the photometric plan?
So can I answer another question from a different commissioner before I answer yours?
Sure.
So Commissioner McGala, there is a plan, maybe DeMire's not aware of it, but there is a plan to do a stoplight at that intersection. In fact, Pankor submitted drawings for that, for the, for the stoplights, for that intersection. I am ready to put that in tomorrow. Unfortunately, it's currently in, gentleman's name is Bill Cogly, if I'm not mistaken. It's in his hands, being reviewed. Every, it's, we have money allocated from the park. We have, you know, well, three years ago, the price was 275,000. Now, it's probably, it's probably over 400 to, to put that in. But we, we have, we have that money as part of the special assessments, a special assessment for the park. And I think everyone would benefit from having the stop sign, stop light there. So it is everyone's intention. And you're right, I would love to have a stop light there. And there is one plan. That is exactly why, earlier you mentioned having a sidewalk that is city-required to run along the public streets. We have actually moved the sidewalk in a way to allow for the, for that development. And that was my, you know, I worked that out with gentleman's name, the head of engineering. And to your question about the lights, photometrics is usually a study of bouncing lights off of something, off a floor, off of something. It's very hard to do photometrics when you're bouncing it off the, the flag. So we did a different analysis. We, we used a computer model.
Which, a lighting model?
Yeah. I think it was Lumion or something like that?
Yeah, I, I use Lumion. It's not, it's not accurate. It's not accurate at all. So here's the thing, you mentioned also hours. And, but if I read correctly, there's a, going to be an American flag, correct?
All ours.
So, so that's supposed to be lit 24/7, as long as it's flying, correct? So I guess, I guess I have, I have an issue with the, with the lights, the lack of information of how much light you're throwing up there. You use Lumion all the time, so that's not accurate at all. The photometrics is really what's needed. I, I know, I know what photometric plan is. I guess what I would suggest is, is that those flags are not flown 24/7, or at least during nighttime, and you, you bring them down. At this time, it's, it's going to be a tough sell for me. Thank you.
So how, how would you address, like, 4:30 during the winter? You would bring the flags down at 4:30?
My concern is the lack of information on how much light is being thrown up there, and light pollution, which affects migration patterns.
But how is that different from other flags in the park?
The only project that's on the docket is yours. So I could only comment to yours.
I, 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 I respect that. But we're looking in context of what's allowed and what's out there. We're not inventing a new thing. We're not inventing a new way to light. In other words, it's not like American flags have always been taken down at night, and we are proposing something different. We're just trying to do what everybody else does. What do you guys do here with the city hall at night?
I don't know.
The flags are always lit at night. And that's normal.
I understand that. They have to be if it's a United States flag.
There, there's a, to take it down every day, there's a procedure. There's, it would take three people to fold the flag.
It's a big flag.
Maybe four.
So in interrupting here, since I'm kind of seeing an impasse, and maybe the ground gain is slowing a bit, can we look to either city staff for comments, or for some kind of buy-in with the petitioner, that there would be further study on this before this moves forward to city council? Hearing your comments, Commissioner Lopez, about uplighting, I, I love dark skies. I understand where you're getting at. Also love the respect of the, of the flags, American or otherwise. And I think blending, blending all that, as much as I'd love to solve it here, can also happen potentially moving forward. But again, we have to look to what staff and the petitioner would, would buy into.
I, I mean, there are a number of possible solutions. We, one is that, and I don't know a lot about photometrics and how they're generated, but certainly there could be a request that the applicant submit a photometrics plan that can be submitted, you know, if the item moves on from the Planning and Zoning Commission, that that item be submitted prior to city council. Or that that item be submitted, and then the item is returned back to Planning and Zoning Commission. There, we can listen to further discussion and see what other suggestions come from the discussion of the commission. It's really up to the commission how you guys want to proceed, what to request, what to approve, what not to approve, what condition to place, so.
Yeah. Thank you, DeMire. I guess I'm, I'm still going to hang on to the, my comment. And I would like to have the commission consider a, a proper study of the, the night sky, and how this is going to affect it. I'm not sure if photometrics are shining, light shining down, shining up is an entirely different study. And, and it can be a Lumion rendering that is completely inaccurate. So I'd like for the commission to consider a study that we can look at to see what the impact truly is. Thank you.
Commissioner Weldon Booth?
No concerns with the signage on the side of the building. I think that looks really nice. And appreciate, you know, the comments about, you know, wanting to be, you know, seen. And appreciate the, you know, the, the decision to look at here in Elgin, tremendous impact on the community. So appreciate that. My, my one concern just comes with the large deviation on the side of the flags. You know, it wouldn't be an issue if it was just a little bit. We're talking about such a large deviation from what's in the current code, that, that's where my main concern comes with. So that's all for me.
All right. I don't have any questions for you. So, oh, you do. I'm sorry. Did I miss this whole side?
You did, yeah.
I apologize. Just you.
You're good. I just want to, I understand their issues. I just want to clarify for my own benefit. I understand it's a bigger flag, but are the lights different from what they would have been if the flag was smaller? Is the light is the same? Okay. So I just want to understand that. Thank you.
All right. Although I'm over my cold, and the fog must be hanging in. So thank you for speaking up and holding me accountable. All right. I don't have any questions for you. So if you want, you can take your seat, and we'll open this up to public comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. As said, public comment. Now is the opportunity for those in the audience. There's a gentleman from another petition, and what looks like the remainder of the development team. No one's moving up. So we will close the public hearing portion of this petition, and look to staff for comments, anything you'd like to add that's been discovered since your initial presentation, or any final thoughts.
I think I'll start by saying that I don't think we've heard anything that would change our findings on the, on the standards. We certainly understand there could be other findings on the standards. So that's, that's always a possibility, obviously. In light of the discussion by the commission, you know, the commission can choose, choose to approve a portion of the request, or the entire request. They can choose to deny the entire request. This is, again, just a recommendation to the city council. And so the, if the, if there is a conclusion to the public hearing tonight, it moves on to the city council. If there is not a conclusion, there's a request to continue, then there should be a specific reasoning for continuance, and what needs to happen, and by when, so that the applicant knows what they need to do. And the commission can certainly add a condition to modify proposals. So, for example, if the commission finds that they're okay approving flags of a smaller size, then the commission can say that such height and size of the flags are approved, or whatever. So really, it's up to the commission, and whatever motions the commission chooses to make.
Thank you. I was going to cover some of that instruction, as well as to remind us that it's easier if we make a motion to approve and then vote no. And if you do vote no, if your reasons were not already clear, to, to enumerate them when you're, when we do vote.
And if I may, Chairman Cox?
Yes.
Considering that the recommendation, that the commission provides a recommendation only, it would certainly be recommended by staff to, to forward some type of a recommendation, with some clear direction for the city council, what needs to happen, or what the applicant needs to provide. That, that may be a more effective way of, of handling the, the application. So just, just a thought.
Appreciate that. With that said, it seems like this is a good time to have some discussion prior to a motion. And if we've got conditions, recommendations, or other thoughts. So just, without rehashing everything, starting on my left, Commissioner Abouali, do you have thoughts?
More emotion?
If there's any discussion prior to a motion being made, if, any conditions, recommendations, or anything that you'd...
Discussion on the petition.
Commissioner to discuss, yes.
Since you're starting over here, I guess you could walk me through it a little. But I do move to recommend, to recommend approval. The city council approved petition 3-22. I, subject to the recommendation, to ensure that the lighting issue is the same as it would be otherwise in these regular standards. I can understand the light pollution argument, but if we, if that already has been addressed in the past, then I'm okay with that. So as long as we know that there's nothing, no additional problems.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I did supposedly, I did pick on you a little bit, I suppose. As one of our newer commissioners, and I did not intend to do that. So Commissioner Jones, do you have anything that you'd like the commission to consider?
Chairman Cox, if I may, there was a motion to approve.
Oh, that was a motion?
Correct. There was a motion to approve. And just to confirm, that's a motion to approve with the findings of fact as provided in the staff report, including all conditions outlined in the staff report, plus an additional condition, that there is a, there's a finding provided that the lighting proposed is of such nature that it meets the lighting that would otherwise be required for flags that meet the code. Correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
All right. Then is there a second to the motion?
I second. Karen?
All right. Any discussion? Working from my left again, Commissioner Jones?
No discussion, nothing from me.
Commissioner McGala?
I'm considering voting no on that motion, for the reasons I stated previously. I, I think I'd be more supportive of a motion that would approve the petition in part with respect to the variances on the signage, but not, and for the flags, I would allow just what the code requires. Thank you.
Okay. And we can certainly amend motions. There's a...
I'm not, I'm not going to amend the motion. I'm just giving my thoughts on the current motion that's being presented.
Thank you. Commissioner Valdez?
I don't have any comments on that.
Commissioner Lopez?
I'd, I'd like to amend that motion to, to include approval of every item outside of the uplighting of the flags. Is that proper language?
It is, but it complicates the additional condition that Commissioner Abouali provided, because that specific condition was regarding lighting.
Understood.
So if you can clarify your motion to amend, that'd be great.
I'd like to have concrete information on how much, how many lumens, how many foot candles are being thrown up at the night sky. That has not been answered. And so I'm not really sure how to make that into a motion, but is a, a strong concern I have.
No problem at all. And I think applicants here can hear that. So we would, one way or the other, if this moves forward, we will, we will make sure that that information is provided for the city council. The question remains, that suggestion and that, that sort of comment does not alter, and this is the question, it does not alter the additional condition that if this is approved, the lighting stays according to what the code would allow for flags that meet the code. So that they essentially are not allowed any additional lighting that may be needed for the larger flags. And if, as long as, I'm just confirming that that's still a condition that's out there in addition for the motion.
Thank you very much for clarifying that. Because then, if, if the flag size gets approved, and all of a sudden they're underlit, then, then it's an issue per the flag code.
Well, and that's, that's what I was going to add. I'm not familiar with the federal flag code. Number one, I'm assuming that only applies to the federal and state flags. I, I wouldn't expect that to apply to any other flags, such as a company logo flag.
That is correct.
So one, one, hopefully it's not me, but one would have to research the, the federal flag code and figure that out. But...
I, I think, I think it just, I think it just, it just calls them to be lit. I think it would be, I would be surprised if there was a foot candle.
Weird things have been required.
Yeah. That, that would be kind of funny. And, and I'd love to know that answer, if there is one. The concern is not lighting the flag, is the, over, over lighting the sky. And then one more comment I have to what, what you just mentioned, is you, you mentioned approval to city council. And I guess I, I'm not really sure how to amend my motion. I would like that to, that information to come back to this commission before we move forward to city council, but...
Understood. So that's pretty clear now. So, so the motion, the motion, amending the original motion, it sounds like, would be to require the applicant to provide additional lighting information for the proposed uplighting, and that, that be brought back to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So essentially, that becomes a motion to continue, instead of a motion to approve.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So now that we have a motion to amend, we're going to need a second on that motion to amend. to amend the original motion, and then we'll take a vote on that amendment.
I would like to see if Commissioner Wildermuth has any comments. Is that okay?
You're going to make me untangle all of this?
Well, I'm thankful that Demir has a pen in hand, and he's making notes, and we heavily rely on him for many things, and this is one of those.
So, my thoughts, I, I agree with Commissioner McGala's thoughts on approving the signage, and I would, I would, I would like to see approval of a, a flag that's, that, that is up to code. I just, I don't see a, it hasn't been, it hasn't been clear to me that there's a reason to go outside of what the code already states, so I, I would agree with Commissioner McGala's initial statement.
All right. Thank you. I'm not going to add any further discussion at this point in time, so looking to staff, we've got the original motion and a proposal to amend the motion to be a continuance, which would have to be done by Commissioner Abouali, correct?
Well, we need a second on the motion to amend.
Ah, okay. Is there a second then on that motion? Hearing none.
So that, that motion to amend then fails for the lack of second. So then we're back to the original motion to approve, and unless there's any discussion, I can take a roll call on that.
Could you read that one more time, please?
I'm going to read it from my memory.
Yes, that's fine.
But it's a motion to recommend approval, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report, with the additional condition being that there's a finding that the lighting proposed be the same as the lighting that would otherwise be allowed for the flags as allowed by code, so.
Got a visual affirmation?
Thankfully it's recorded, so we can always double check.
All right. So then, yes, staff, please call the roll.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
No.
Commissioner McGala?
No.
Commissioner Valdez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wildermuth?
No.
And Chairman Cox?
No.
The motion fails, three votes in favor, four against.
And as I understand, this, this still continues to city council?
That's the plan, unless the applicant chooses to withdraw the application, or if they choose to amend the application, then in that case, we would have to review it. If it's a substantial change to the application, that would go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission. If it is not substantial, then it would probably still move to the city council, and then it's going to be up to city council.
Okay. Bit different than the first petitions that were heard here tonight, but again, working with city staff, the, this petition is unfortunately past that point, but you can work with city staff going forward on, on this petition. All right. Love to, love to have the conversation, but it's probably best offline at this point. All right. So then, at this point in time, we will move forward. The other, other business, if there's anyone on the commission who has items to be heard? No? All right. You know what, my computer went to sleep. What do we have here next? Sorry about that. It's one of those nights, I guess, technology. Summary of pending development applications?
No. I don't have the page two.
That's all right.
There was public comment before that, if you want to just call that.
Thank you. All right. So is there public comment then before, and I see we have one person in the audience remaining, who is laughing and shaking his head no? So, we'll close the public comment then, and summary of pending development applications?
Let's see. We have a busy couple months in front of us, extremely busy, but we should have four or five petitions for you most likely of the next meeting on April, April, I believe it's April 4th, on the first Monday. A couple items that, that were on the commission's agenda in February, the text amendment regarding consulting services and those types of businesses, that's going to city council this Wednesday for consideration, along with the amendment to the annexation agreement for the church on Hops Road, where they're dedicating some land for the right-of-way. And we have received an application for the annexation of the property at the southwest corner of, of Randall Road and Higgins, the far northwest end of the city. If you recall, the city had received a similar application for that annexation right before the pandemic started in 2020. It was actually reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission that March of 2020, and then, and then pandemic hit, and so the applicant had chosen to withdraw that application. Now we have a different application, although same applicant, so that will most likely be before you in May. We also have an application for a solar farm, which is pretty exciting, that's on the west end of the city, that should be provided to you at the next meeting in April, along with some other, maybe a little bit smaller applications, so. It's, we're, as you can see in the number of petitions, we're already up to 11. In fact, we got another one that's number 12, so that's, we're on pace for six, you know, applications per month, that would be more than 70 per year, and as you can see, we can handle about three or four per month, so it's going to be a very busy, busy year again, if it stays on this course, so. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions about any of the petitions.
I, I have a question, Demir. So when you mentioned this flag petition, when will the city council hear? Is it the next city council meeting? Is that scheduled already?
So most likely the applicant, because we have to receive the, the transcript for each petition, by the time we receive that, usually the earliest we can schedule these applications is the following month, so items that come to Planning and Zoning Commission are usually the first reading of the city council at the following month, so this would be in April. One second, I can tell you. The second Wednesday in April would be the 13th, unless the applicant requests additional time, where they want to provide some additional information or something like that. So we will have conversations with the applicant, it, it doesn't happen often that the commission recommends denial, so. The other application that the commission recommended denial, 2401 Weld Road, the self-storage facility actually, that has been on hold, as you probably saw on the, on the development review schedule. We do anticipate that one will be moving forward to the city council in the near future, just not sure when. So, so it could be that, that the time between the PNC and the city council is delayed at the request of the applicant, so we'll see.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Anyone else thoughts, otherwise, or entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Staff, please call the roll.
Okay. Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner McGala?
Yes.
Commissioner Abouali?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Valdez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wildermuth?
Yes.
And Chairman Cox?
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Thank you, and good night.
Thank you.